Brooks and Crofton.
So you will notice in your new policies, I also had Mr. Reed's report, which didn't make the packet, so you probably didn't set it back in your folders, which is essentially a winter season schedule.
Is that new here tonight for?
No.
All right, we'll call me an order from the staff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion to declare open meeting. Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Officially open. The Public Meetings Act is posted on the door back there, here to read that. Roll call, Krista.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Turn around.
Here.
Approve the consent agenda. We're starting out with the agenda for last meeting.
Minutes.
Yeah, two minutes. Okay, we'll move on to the financial reports. So where did our bus get go down on us out of that tow?
I don't know.
Around us or?
Johnson route.
Is that the one that had the death problem?
I don't know what was wrong with it, but.
But where was it local and around, or was it activity somewhere?
No, Bob was just driving it, didn't mean anybody said.
Oh.
But he knew there was something wrong with it, had to tow it. Insurance covered it.
The insurance covered it, you said?
Insurance covered it.
How come it says four hundred and sixty-five dollars and five cents? How much if that was bust over?
Well, I would tell you, because I should have checked the insurance.
Was it the door bus that was stolen? We're asking the other person.
I think it was, well, and again, I guess I could have had Bob here.
Yes, that's right, I was just curious, more so whether it led somebody somewhere. Okay, there's more questions on mail, along with claims.
What was the woodshop door?
Yeah, so on the east end of the building, we replaced the band door and the woodshop door. The shop, woodshop doors to the south of the band door. You'll notice them if you look, especially the band room, notice it's wider than the end, it's got glass in it. It was shot in.
That's why it went slow.
Slice in it, yeah. Wouldn't blow stuff in, and so doors, I think, were the same age, so we just thought we'd replace them.
So that's for two doors?
No, that's for one door.
It's an old steel door like the bedroom.
Yeah. It matches the other, matches the other doors, I mean, they're the folks that do all of our, have done all of our doors, so it matches these that we did last year.
What were the window covers?
Window covers.
For elementary's out here.
These are for the blinds for Mrs. Thompson's office, which didn't have any window. Didn't have any shade in it, since it had been used as an office for six or eight years. We put blinds up there, we put them up, and these big windows over here, which particularly in August and September, you know, we have quite a lot of solar heat coming in there, so we put some nice line up. The insurance check for the bus tow, where did that get deposited?
Into general fund, we're got, yeah.
And how much was that?
Three hundred.
Total amount for three hundred?
Where do we get the two, put the two deposits?
The boys locker room and elementary girls bathroom.
Did we get a check from the city for a thousand dollars? Into the general?
That, that was a donation that was made for the elementary. It was from the.
Poultry plant.
The poultry plant, but the check said the city on it.
Okay, I was thinking, what is the city giving us about?
Yeah.
Let me talk about the chicken deal out here.
So they had contacted me and just asked if there was anything that the elementary wanted, and so I gave them a couple different things that we would love, and kind of shot out an amount, thinking that maybe they would give us half of that amount, and they gave us the whole amount.
Good.
They'll do better next time.
I know!
They care if I ask what we've gotten, so.
And we haven't got it yet, so we're going to do one school, one book, so we're going to purchase a book for every family, and we're going to all read the book together.
Cool.
And then do different prizes throughout.
There's no more questions, we'll go back to the previous meeting, since I know none of us have read it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Public comment, has anybody here wishing to make a public comment? Number eight, discussion items, first service report.
I invited Linda to come, share some details from the report from the Department of Ed on our, well, that's an annual visit for three years. Yeah. She had a new gal come and visit our kitchen and spend much of the day, sent us a report, but best to come from Linda, which I've gone through, Linda and I met, talked about a few things, but I'll let you share with the board what you think is pertinent.
When someone takes over a new thing, they come in and they see, you know, paperwork, how things are set up, which is mainly what she did, she came in and she watched us serve, saw how the kitchen was set up, looked at my books, who did it and done, and kind of went through some stuff with me as what I needed to be doing, and what was being done, and what she thought might need to be changed. There was a few things that she wanted me to do as far as adding a few grains, the portion size, some of the stuff that I've been serving, to kind of wash all that stuff, which is all, it's all written in the books, it's, you know, what I need to be doing, so I don't know, she didn't really find a whole lot.
Mostly affirmations, and then, you know, a handful or more of recommendations, I mean, they like to come and see the setups of kitchens, and they, you know, maybe curious about how you, you know, you go about, you know, moving kits through the line and that kind of business, but, but a lot of, certainly a lot of positives that she recognized, and given certain setups too, they're like, okay, how do you go about doing the necessary things, given what you have to work with? So, you know, she affirmed that, okay, I mean, this is, this is all good, that's a clever way of doing things, that looks appropriate, that's all right, but they always have to find something certainly to recommend.
And there's, there's some things I wanted to change, I'm kind of in the process of adding some things, trying some new things, again, and then I've grown up to kind of know what we did in the past, and, you know, maybe some of the stuff we can bring back, few desserts, we'd have dessert, more grains, so that kind of all adds into what she wanted, kind of. Dr. Alvin and I talked about maybe cutting up the fruit for the kids, so that it'd be easier for them to eat, you know, like kids and birds and stuff. And I don't know, it's like, just the basic stuff, so.
All right, thank you for coming in for that. Move on to number nine, evaluation of superintendent. Take place, the evaluation will be filled out before the December meeting, and then we'll have our, our one to one, I guess, one to six of them at December meeting.
Is there anywhere that says it has to be in December? Because if we make changes on it, are we making changes on our question?
Well, I kind of like to do that tonight. If we make changes, I want to do that tonight, and if it's still getting mailed out to us, we can get it filled in. Give it back to you in time now.
Okay.
Time to do that, so. We're going to kind of move this to the end of the meeting, so people have to stick around for all this, but we'll go through the questions, decide if we want to make changes in the questions, add questions, take some out, and then we're also going to go into a closed session probably later and talk about, what's the official language of it? Collective bargaining. Collective bargaining, which is when we make comments, individual comments, in the past, we've been doing that individually, sending them in, the secretary's just been writing them all down. Well, we kind of need to do that as a group, a closed session, because one person might say he's doing this right, next person might say he's doing the same thing wrong, so what does that tell the superintendent? You know, doesn't tell anything, so we need to do that as a group, and kind of put those together, so we are just leading, or giving different ideas, so, so we'll go in a closed session later to do that, but we'll, at the end of the meeting, we'll go through the questions here in public, and talk about this, so. Anything you want to add, Dr. Alvin, what you would.
No, I, when I, you know, looked at that policy on evaluations superintendent, yeah, and it doesn't say specifically what month you need to do that, traditionally, it's a December or January, certainly superintendent contracts are usually December or January, so obviously evaluations either the month before, those happen.
But you have till April to do that, get your contract, right?
Well, that's for teachers.
I said in the policy, you have until April fifteenth.
That's for, for teachers, teachers have to be notified by April fifteenth, whether they intend to have them return, or on the fifteenth of March, actually, teachers have to let you know by the fifteenth, whether they intend to return. So, there's no, you know, since superintendent is to a certain degree an at-will employee, there's not hard and fast, you know, without tenure, there's no hard and fast dates on when those happen, but generally, it's a December, January process, but yes, I had asked, I know this is coming up, I asked Mr. Sauer to, you know, have a conversation about it and with the full board, just so it's a more productive, you know, conversation and document, because I work for one board, I don't work for six individuals, I work for one board, and so I need to have a document that reflects the feelings of the entire board, and as I look back through my previous evaluations, you know, I can't say that I necessarily felt that way, you know, particularly when every board member gets to put individual comments in that, so those are the things that I think I would really appreciate the board discussing collectively, you know, amongst yourself, and then when, with me, when you all determine this is, we all agree with, you know, the language of this document. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, the board considering the document that's been used, the evaluation tool that's been used, and you can use certainly, you know, whatever one you want, it just has to be on file with the Department of Ed, and most of them are pretty similar, to be honest with you.
So a comment about doing it in December too, is your new board comes on in January, when they come on, so you kind of want to do this before the new guys come on, because I have no idea how to fill this out, or, you know, upends have been going, so, so that's, that's one reason you do it in December.
We did it last year in December, we sat in on it anyway, I don't know if you were present for that one or not.
Yeah.
Because he did do it last year.
He told you to.
Because you were there for two or three years.
I actually got notes on it.
You already know what you're going to write in. Okay, so we'll bring that back later in the meeting. Number ten, junior high football co-op with Creighton for 2020.
I was contacted by the superintendent at Creighton, who was essentially asking to consider a fifty-fifty co-op next year compared to this year, which was, they brought, I think, eight boys and a coach, we benefited from that by kind of absorbing part of their football schedule as well, because we went from a four-game schedule, one home game the previous year, to a six-game schedule with four home games, one of those being in Creighton, so that's certainly, I think, good, was good for our kids, from all observations and comments from both sides, I believe it worked very well, obviously, it was a little inconvenient for Creighton, but it gave their kids that wanted to play junior high football an opportunity that they otherwise wouldn't have had, so from what I understand from our coaches, and their people are people, I think folks were pretty pleased with that arrangement, well, they, they would like to consider, have us consider a fifty-fifty arrangement, which would essentially mean the practice here, there, here, there, here, there, as close to fifty-fifty as possible, certainly also games, where games are played, more games to be played in Creighton, this year, we played one, and so I said, well, that's certainly a board decision, I'll bring it to the full board. I did ask, well, what do you anticipate your numbers will be, because I think that's an important detail, this year, I think they brought eight kids, they anticipate next year they'll have eleven or twelve in seventh and eighth grade, they do have a bigger sixth grade class of boys, I think they have twelve boys in the sixth grade. I don't know how many of their kids that played this year were seventh graders, two or three, Mr. Schmidt, do you know? Wyatt, do you know?
I think three, I think they have five eighth graders and three seventh graders.
Five and three, so they have three eighth graders, and so they must be expecting eight or nine of their current sixth graders to play, of which I think they had, they had twelve fifth grade boys last year, so I just rolled that up to this year, so somewhere about there. We've got a large seventh grade class that participates, so we'll have, I think we had twelve seventh grade boys play this year, if we have twelve play next year, and half of our boys in the sixth grade, which we have eight boys in the sixth grade right now, not sure how many Zion boys have played, so we'd be looking at. They're mostly girls in the sixth grade.
They're all girls.
All girls in the sixth grade, okay, so. So we'd be looking at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you know, bigger numbers, but more comparable it sounds like, but again, that's all speculation, we don't know for sure. I know they didn't have a junior football program this year, and they had, I don't know how many of their sixth grade boys played, junior football, two came to play, I don't know if that'd be indicative of how many might play seventh grade, but, so, not a decision certainly that needs to be made today, we need something to gather more information from, I suppose, from the public, but they have made a, informal or informal, but a request certainly to, to co-op, which, you know, is close to sharing fifty-fifty as you can, coaches, salaries, travel. And all the discussion about uniforms and name and color would be kind of a peripheral discussion, but still, one that probably would take a certain amount of fashion and time.
It seems like so far, the two years they've wanted to do this, in the A Ds, they've not through a committee of boards or anything like that, they've never contacted any of us and talked to us or anything, but I guess that would have, my first question would be, is how many years have they been wanting to do this, is this something you want to do, you know, just for three, four years, or is something you want to do forever, you know, because if it's just three or four years, it doesn't make sense to me to go to all the work and come up with a co-op type situation, it's going to bust up in a few years, but those are questions I guess I would like to ask.
Probably not going to gain kids since they get older, they're still going to have smaller numbers, more forwards,
if that's the case, I think they'll be able to field a varsity team in three, you know, four years or whatever.
They do, now, last year's numbers were twelve boys in the fifth grade, currently six, eighteen boys in the fourth grade, currently fifth, and then seven and eleven, so going down to fourth and third grade, so.
Would that be a short term thing?
Ours are somewhat similar, we have pretty good, double digits of boys, every boy in the elementary.
I don't look at it from the standpoint of what we want to do, I look at it from the standpoint of providing an opportunity for boys that would not just have an opportunity until they're, I don't look at it as, I don't care how long it is.
Well, I'm not saying not to do anything with them, I'm just saying.
Well, I agree, I see what you're saying.
Do a whole co-op thing, or can we just work it out for a few years and make it happen? Do we have to have special uniforms that say, you know, a new name and all this and that, or can we just use what we got and make it work for a few years?
Get that jersey, right?
But yeah, I mean, before I make a decision, I want to talk to parents and coaches and stuff too, so.
Is there any other information you want me to have for next month?
To have from them? I guess some actual numbers and what they're thinking, how long, you know. Yeah, I don't know, and we can, if they're going to have four kids down here, and we're going to have fifteen, do you go sixty-five?
Exactly fifty-fifty, yeah.
I think you can do it more year by year, kind of how the numbers stack up, and we're going to have the facilities going anyway, let's just do it year by year.
I mean, they can use a van to haul their kids, they won't use a bus.
That's right.
You know what I mean? You can even think about it.
I got a bus.
If they haul four kids though, and we got to haul fifteen, we either got to run two vans or a bus, we're putting more gas money into their half, that's not right either. I agree, it should be proportional.
If they anticipate eleven or twelve, as he said, that would be more than, as well. That's what I'm saying, they might be worried about, because then it's easier to throw eight kids and drive them. But we definitely would have numbers over van size.
I might think anyway, I believe with twenty-eight this year, twenty of our own boys, I think that seventh grade class this year, it's more like fourteen, isn't it, fifteen, you probably anticipate probably four or five that played for me this last year, football, women that have played anyway, it's probably been like nineteen or twenty of our own anyway, but that makes a whole lot of difference anyway, maybe sort of same as.
Maybe close to that.
Maybe, yeah, but I agree, Jim, I mean, I, if they got boys looking for a place to play, they don't have an opportunity up there, by all means, let's play here, you know, and, so, some of them played for me the last couple of years, Coach about, I'll go and push three of them, I guess, but it's been a great thing, kids, they've all gotten along, but I saw this year, coaches got along great, kids got along great, anyway, it was a great deal, so.
Yeah, we were, Coach started Creighton just the other day, and one of the kids that Harrison played with, they were over there visiting like they were old friends.
Yeah.
Which was nice to see.
So yeah, I guess I would have a question on how long, anyway, the screening for our regional co-op anyway.
So at some point, I mean, you play, what, two, or A and a B game, seventh and eighth grade?
Yeah, the other team has numbers to do it.
Yeah, most of the teams that play, do they have that?
Well, most of them did, Creighton, I see why not, did not, I think, right, Jim, they had like ten players, I think, up there, so, but the coaches did a good job getting all the kids through, getting in, I think they played all twenty-eight kids, I think that game.
We'll have to look at rescheduling, maybe there's some bigger schools.
Maybe that's, maybe that's trying to get, have those bigger schools get, get them instead of that.
If your numbers drop in two or three years, then you're back to trying to reschedule back then again, too, you know.
Was it one or two games where they only played one game? I think it was just two, wasn't it?
They didn't get Neely too, they didn't play a second game, because Neely only had, I think, twelve kids on the sidelines.
But you still just play eight men.
You don't play eleven men.
And so if you went up to eleven men, then you'd have to reschedule all your teams.
They had eleven men, but I mean, different handle. That's for sure.
Different field, everything, yeah. Okay, well, we definitely need more discussion with them. Okay, number eleven, review of board policy series four oh six, certified employees.
There's a few things in visiting Mrs. Thompson, Mr. Schmidt as well, because they have responsibility to implement board policy as well, certainly at the building, the classroom level, so I asked them to look through these and share any thoughts, so if we look at four oh six oh two.
Four oh six oh two.
Well, you want to throw that out with your.
You were supposed to keep that page to the last page, you weren't in here until.
The only, the only thing that I would recommend striking from here.
Mine too.
Is that's that first paragraph after the bullet list, so the first paragraph after the bulleted list on four oh six oh two, last sentence.
These are four oh fours.
Four oh six oh two.
In the very last of the four oh fours, on the back.
Yep, right there, very last.
So, you'll get that home eventually. Whenever possible, the preliminary screening of applicants shall be conducted by the administrator, who will be directly supervising and overseeing the person being hired, that's a process that I've been using even, okay? So when, when we're hiring teachers, they apply to the school district, they apply to the superintendent, okay? So I gather that information, I catalog that information, and then I disseminate that information to principals, okay? So I don't want, because if somebody was to get there applying here and to go straight to Kyle or straight to Heather, well, then they're going to have to push that information up to me, because I'm involved in the screening process, you know, as well, they'll do the interviewing, and they'll do the recommendation to me, to recommend to you, but it comes to my office first, so, so the preliminary screening is not done by the administrator, who will be directly supervising, which will be our principals, so those two lines should just be straightened.
So do they.
Why not let them screen them?
So.
They will screen them, but I will screen them first. They will screen, and they'll get, they'll get everything that I get, I don't, I don't really, I don't screen them and put some in the trash, they get everything that I get, but it comes all to my office first, okay? Okay, and then they'll each get a file, so they haven't been through this process with me yet, but, but they'll each have their own file. And so if we're looking for, let's say, a kindergarten teacher. Somebody's going to freak out, we're looking for a kindergarten. Okay, so this will be labeled kindergarten, and those applicants will go in here and then this will go to Heather. If we're looking for a social studies teacher, those will go in here and those will go to Kyle, but they go through me. Because I, I catalog everything. So the initial screening is by the superintendent. Okay, not by the person who's directly supervising. But they'll do the interviews, I'll meet with the candidates. They'll conduct the interviews, they'll determine which teacher team will be part of their interview process. And then they'll let me know who they want. I'll most certainly affirm it, just like you will.
So you just want to take those two lines out?
Yeah, so whenever possible, preliminary screening of applicants shall be conducted by the administrator, who will be directly responsible for overseeing the person being hired. We'll just recommend that we just strike that on four oh six oh two. Nothing on four oh six oh three that I would recommend, it's all appropriate. Same with four oh six oh four, as far as I'm concerned, unless you have something. On four oh six oh six, the first paragraph, the word superintendent should be replaced with administrative team. Because it is not my sole discretion, I won't make that decision solely, I'll make that with the administrative team. Okay? And then also, in making such assignments, the board shall consider the qualifications of each certified employee underneath the school district. That shouldn't say board, because the board doesn't make assignments. That should say the administrative team. So the word superintendent and the word board should both be replaced with administrative team.
Where do you want to take that board at?
Uh, the second, second line, all the way to the right.
About paragraph one.
Okay, so on four oh six oh six, that would be my recommendation, to replace superintendent and board in the second line, both with administrative team.
So then is it somewhere that we have to say who collects the administrative, puts the administrative team together?
The administrative team and then your superintendent and your principal.
There's never a teacher, like you talked about having teachers for hiring and other stuff.
Now, the, the teachers are generally and should be always part, I believe, of a, of an interview process. And their information is, is, then goes to the, to the principal. They don't necessarily, you know, and we'll visit about this when this comes up, but I don't recommend that they actually get a vote. They just share their data with the principal, who will digest it collectively, and generally they come to the same consensus. Okay, four oh six oh eight, certificated employee evaluation. The, after the numbered list, there's a, the full paragraph starts with school district. The second sentence that says this includes familiarization with the instructional theory into practice model and instruction of APL training for all staff, that line should be stricken. It, it shouldn't list specific either behavior management or teaching and learning strategies or models or programs, which I TIP, instructional theory into practice and APL FAR. And these are, those are, are certainly, it's not, you know, those are inappropriate instructional strategies for, for programs. But we shouldn't list specific ones, they're way outdated. I TIP is not something that school districts have talked about for a long, long time. Probably even before this was last reviewed in twenty-fourteen. APL is, is good stuff, certainly, but less than half our staff, I would say, has been trained in APL, and that training is probably five plus years ago. And these are things that can change with the change of administration and just, you know, philosophy. But tho, those are not appropriate, they don't apply, and so that line shouldn't be in there. And all the, and this is, you know, they have the principals provide some input here. This, the second to last paragraph, it says new and probationary certificated employees shall be evaluated at least once each semester. Okay, this evaluation procedure will include at least one classroom observation for one period each semester. Well, one period doesn't really apply to elementary. So I, I'm not sure what the appropriate language, full lesson, one full lesson period, or, or maybe one period is fine. I mean, folks with common sense understand what that is.
Somewhere in here it did state that for elementary, one period would be one class of math or science or.
Well, that, that's on the next one.
Yeah.
And I think there was maybe even a little more question on the wording of the next one.
So that's how too.
Well, it, it, yeah, this is why we do this, this is why we do policy review, you know? And when you do that, when you do it every five years, you're going to find something. And, and probably should, if you don't honestly, then, you know, these policies are not really reflective of your practice.
So do you want to add something like that to this one? That one period would be equal to one math class or science or etc. Or you don't like that wording either?
Because it does have to be a full instructional period in the high school, that language is in statute. Okay, so Mr. Schmidt would win for a full court, seven minutes, for a formal evaluation, he can't pop in and pop out. He can't do a walkthrough, which, which they do, which are more valuable than a formal, you know, statute mandated observation. But for elementary, you know, you're, in, in first grade, a math lesson might be twenty-five minutes.
Could we, could we just say, observation for one lesson slash period? I mean, would that?
That would be more appropriate, would be.
One, or one period slash lesson? Does that cover it for, I mean, by having lesson in there, that covers it elementary? By having period, that covers it secondary?
Do you need to make it a primary subject though, I mean, you can't do it for?
I don't, I don't think you do, because I think, I mean, then if someone were to come to me and say, well, I want it to be a spelling lesson, I can very easily say, no. It needs to be either. I mean, that's a compromise.
If your administrator can determine what, what they want to see, usually work with the teacher and when that will be.
Yeah.
So.
I guess I, as a board member, would rather have you evaluating a math or science course rather than a spelling.
Oh, absolutely, no, I was saying that I would say no.
Right, I know we're on the same side, but I'm just saying to put it in a wording so it gets done that way, so there's no.
You could just say, you have one period at high school, one lesson in elementary.
But still, he's, it's not, I don't.
What, core lesson?
It's not, yeah.
Well, they, yes, some teachers don't teach core. So how are we going to evaluate Mrs. White?
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, you just use your, your administrative discretion on, on what they, if they know that even it's their core, it's core teacher.
Good.
So, one high school period, one, one period in the high school, one full period in the high school, and full lesson in the elementary. On four oh six oh eight, R one then. You know, at the end it says elementary teachers shall be observed for one entire teaching lesson. Yes, math, science, and then it lists, you know, essentially your core. But again, we should strike that. If she wants to win, she's going to formally observe Ms. Knox. So list it.
Sure.
So you just, your, your administrative team knows what they need to go through. So math, science, language arts, reading, spelling, or social studies should be stricken. So, and then there's a, you know, the pre and post-observation, says in the third paragraph, the evaluator shall conduct a pre and post-observation. Of course, you have a post-observation conference and you, you have that discussion. Pre-observation is really not very common practice. I mean, it's, it's common to say, we're going to meet and talk about what we're going to see, and this is how it's going to look, and here's where I'll sit and all that. But in all practicality, that generally doesn't happen. And I, you know, they, they make that arrangement, if that can be considered a pre-conference. I mean, so that was the only thing, what, that caught my eye, is your pre-conference could be a back and forth email about when do you want me to come in, okay, I'll be in. That's, as far as I'm concerned, a pre-conference, it's not a written documented, this is what we discussed, about what I will see, what I will be looking for, where I will sit, and who I will talk to, and that kind of business, so.
To me, it just makes it not a surprise, I mean, they know you're coming, so you can't just walk in and say, I'm here, you know?
Not, not in the formal.
Right.
So, and then there's, you know, the probationary period, teachers need to be observed twice a year. Once they receive tenure, once a year. So we've got a discrepancy in the very first line of the policy. Each permanent certificated staff member shall be observed at least once each school year. Well, that's true. But then in the fourth paragraph, each permanent certificated staff member will receive a written formal evaluation at least once every three years. So, in the fourth paragraph, it should probably say each tenured, certificated staff member will receive a written formal evaluation at least once every three years. I, I mean, and, once every three years is not, I mean, to be honest, but I, I just thought that, well, that's not incredibly clear, each of those two statements, but.
So, for the last two years, you would just have a verbal conversation with the teacher?
Well, they have walkthroughs, and as necessary, of course, administrator knows their teaching staff well enough to know whether, okay, it's not your year to be evaluated, but we have some things that we need to work on. And so you have that conversation, you have that evaluation if you need to, that formal evaluation.
I guess I'm talking more about the written part. Says every three years you have a written evaluation, the other two years you just have a verbal.
These are minimum standards.
Right. But you could just have a verbal conversation with that teacher, the other two years, but every three years you have to write, or you write. That's what this is saying.
Right, and, and with the walkthroughs that we use, they, they do still get written feedback.
Does that go on the permanent record then?
No, it just is for them.
But this one would go on the permanent records?
Yeah, a formal. And so every teacher has a right to know what is in their file, in their permanent personnel file. And they also have the right, the opportunity to add anything to their permanent file. And so we, we wouldn't put, we wouldn't take a sticky note and stick it in there without their knowledge and an opportunity to put their own sticky note in there. Okay, but by law, yes, a, a copy of their formal evaluation document has to go in their permanent file and be kept on file in the superintendent's office, which both of those files are in the superintendent's office, but. Right?
It's up to the superintendent.
Don't put them in the same cabinet.
So anytime you did do a written, it would have to go in that file?
Yes, if you do a formal written. So really, that's, that's fine, I think just that one line needs to be stricken, that, you know, the rest is appropriate, it's just minimum standards. And then we've got just a, a misspelled word in the, the third paragraph from the bottom. The teacher shall receive, teacher shall receive one copy, so we just need to strike the C from the word once. Okay, so.
So what, where's that file? I mean, just if it goes to, have a judgment type, you know? But if that teacher went to another school, that school could not.
They don't get that file.
That's the only thing that's.
They can get some information from that, but they want a teaching certificate or something from there, but they are not entitled to, nor would you share formal evaluations or anything. So, would entertain a motion for revisions to policy four oh six series as discussed?
The last one's good then?
Yeah, yeah, four oh six oh eight R one, well, we're, we're going to strike out the specific content areas in the first paragraph and then correct that misspelled word.
Let me know, I, you want to go around?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't have anything else on that.
So is it saying here how often a certified teacher gets evaluated?
Once every two years.
Not formally, but.
Walk through type.
Walk through type thing. Do you do that every year?
It's our discretion, we can do it two, three times a week if we want to, we can do it once a month, you know?
But is it, but do you try to do it at least once a year? I mean, you haven't done it here, but you've both been in education before.
I think I've done every one of my teachers three times at least this year so far.
Like walkthroughs? Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's good, all right.
Not quite all. Well, Mr. Schumacher.
Be there tomorrow.
He's got student teachers, so.
They're the two fastest ones at school, you can't catch up. Okay, I will make the motion to approve the board policy four oh six series with the changes to be made as stated. For first and seconded, myself, yes, Krista?
Yes.
Sure, Wyatt?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
You got all that? Okay, move on to community reports and the twelve negotiations. Yeah, one or two more meetings since last month, one for sure, one or two. You do two or three in a night, so it's hard to keep up, I guess. You guys got kind of a printout on what we've done so far. First things were, were nothing new. Insurance has taken a pretty good job. They stated that if it went up seven percent or more, that they would have to pay a hundred dollars, a premium.
That was a hundred thousand base, I'm sorry.
Or at the base, I'm sorry, yeah, they're six point seven on right now. Um, adding assistant, one at coach, putting on the extra. Extra duty call, E plus her experience. She'll get half paid or. Half paid, etc., for any reason.
Well, we currently pay at half, we bump it to a full position.
We went from one sponsor to two sponsors for the classes. Some of those classes, they feel like they, it's a lot of work, especially the junior class, I think they need some help, so. Said we used to have two while back.
We've always had two for junior, but you used to have two for all of them, right, Chad?
Yep, at least two.
Seventh and eighth grade as well.
Three even.
Seventh and eighth grade?
They only have had two.
One, one a piece, yeah.
Your high dances aren't so high today, and myself.
Still, you should get some type of combat pay for that.
You know where all the hiding spots are right now. Okay, cash and lube. Fifty-five percent of single insurance, no premium. Currently we're at thirty. There's still some effect, like we have, this year we have three people in cash and lube. Expect next year, one or two maybe.
Four total. Yeah, we're going to take, you know, lose one or two here coming up preseason.
So it doesn't really add up to a real big deal. Unused sick leave. Went from ten dollars a day to forty-five dollars a day, and that's it, they have their forty-five days. They have to have forty-five days to get paid. Another reason we did that is teachers are know they're going to retire. A lot of times they have all those days, they're not going to get paid much, they, they kind of tend to use them, right? They get sick a little more, and so, you know, we're not going to keep them in school for ten dollars a day. But we're hoping if we, if we offer forty-five, that they'll, they'll come and teach, because if you have to pay a sub or you never get. you have to pay a sub, or you never get, kids don't learn as much of the sub as they do with the, the teacher being here, so. We're hoping that keeps them in school. Same way with returning teachers, over forty-five days, they get paid over, over forty-five days, back down to two forty, forty dollars a day, which is twenty now. If they leave the district, go to another school, we're only gonna pay them ten, because we feel like, you know, if they wanna go somewhere else, we're not gonna support them as much, I guess.
Is it, I don't know, how many days they have, or if they have two, or twenty, it doesn't matter, right?
Correct. No, we were gonna pay...
Or they're paid down, but they have to have the forty-five, right?
They only pay, yeah, sorry. And then forty-five down to zero, so they could max out at four fifty.
And I suppose that is designed to...
No, my bad, my bad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's what it was. They had to have forty-five bank. Now, if they have two, you get twenty bucks. If you have two and go somewhere else, you get twenty bucks. If you have twenty, you get two hundred bucks.
Okay, and then the salary, this year we did a seven hundred and seventy-five dollar increase on the base, just two point three percent. The second year will be a seven hundred and forty dollar increase on the base, so just two percent. And I think we've had a couple little things we're gonna talk about yet. This deal is, paragraph on the bottom about the columns, and Dr. Arnold will have to explain that, I guess. He understands that a lot better than I do, looking at what the situation is there. Talk about...
You want me to talk about that now? Yeah.
Just, just a little...
If, if I could ask you quickly, in your packet, to turn to your salary matrix that looks like that, so that's gonna show, that's gonna be right on the backside of page thirteen, so I put a preliminary copy of the negotiated agreement in your packet, so it's just on the backside of page thirteen. Okay, so that's your salary matrix for next year, given current, you know, agreed upon base of thirty-seven, one fifty, which is upper-left column, right? And then, all salary matrix are built the same, I've never seen one any different than ours, but they all have varying amounts of columns to the right, or steps down, and then whatever they multiply by, the lowest you might see is a four by four, so you get four percent for moving over, four percent for moving down, but every school district can nego, negotiates with their teachers for whatever they want theirs to be. I've seen four and a halves by fours, four and quarters by four and a halves, whatever. Ours is four and a quarter by four and a quarter, okay, so, four and a quarter across and down, so this automatically populates those salaries. So, at some point in time, and it may be, well, there's a BA thirty, there's two BA thirty-six columns in this matrix. And the BA thirty-six MA column was negotiated in years ago by teachers for, for teachers that were on staff that had thirty-six hours past the bachelor's, but it, it didn't amount to a master's degree. It's usually take all kinds of hours past the bachelor's, but if it's not in a program of study, that's just a BA plus, whatever you can move it to. But if it's in a program of study, generally at thirty-six hours, you achieve a master's, generally, thirty-six hours is a master's degree. So, somebody could have a BA thirty-six, but not a master's, they're then gonna be stuck, they can't move any further to the right until they earn a master's degree. And it, no matter how many hours it takes them, they're not gonna get compensated for those hours beyond a master's until they earn that master's degree. And then after the master's, and then it's another series of, of graduate hours. Okay, so, there's two BA thirty-six columns in here. So, teachers that are moving across from the left, in the BA, BA nine, BA eighteen, BA twenty-seven, if they're moving to the right, they could be at BA plus twenty-seven, get nine more hours to earn their master's, they will jump that BA thirty-six column and move over two and down one. Generally, matrices aren't designed for that to happen, but it can. I checked with, you know, the, our, the whole array that I have in twenty-some schools. One school, Emerson Hubbard, has a similar scenario. Okay, so it's not completely unheard of, but it is an anomaly. So, you know, I recognized this, brought it to the negotiation team's attention, we visited about it with PPA, that this column could be removed, and probably should be, I mean, uh, but that's a certain, obviously, a board decision. But every, and then that would move all the columns from the masters over, BA thirty-six, MA, all of those would slide to the left, but they're gonna lose a four and a quarter since they moved to the left one. Okay, so you could simply write into your negotiated agreement, you could, that everybody that is in the masters to the right, those folks would receive an extra four and a quarter every year for their duration, say, at, at public school. And so, nobody's out anything, but you're, you're, you're taking out the opportunity for, for a teacher to, to have three moves, plus a base increase in one year. But, and again, that's a board decision with PPA, but it is an anomaly in our matrix that probably should be, you know, considered, because we do want our teachers to get a master's, and most all of them would, quite honestly. Most of our teachers that are moving on the left hand of the matrix to the right are gonna jump that BA thirty-six column to the MA column from the BA twenty-seven. Most are, and that's, and that's good. And, 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 you know, again, nobody's saying that, that, that nobody deserves it, but a matrix is usually, is not designed, most, every negotiated agreement limits teachers to one move horizontally, one move vertically. Most all do, that you would find, and that's pretty common practice, okay? But because we have this BA thirty-six column in here, our teachers moving across can make two moves horizontally and one move vertically. So, that was something that came in kinda late in our discussions with PPA, and, you know, just, it would, it would clean up the matrix, it would, and it would, I don't know, take a, a, a additional benefit out of there that probably wasn't intended, I guess, I don't know for sure, but. And again, one, one school does allow, and that's Emerson Hubbard, same column, there would be a BA thirty-six column before their master's column. I don't know, clear that up.
So if you take that out, then every, everything is a move over, right?
Yes. Everything from the MA column, so the five columns on the right side would move left. So we'd lose ten steps out of our matrix. One column, ten steps. I'm not gonna caution anybody.
The salary would be the same?
Correct.
Moved it over?
Nobody's, yes, you would have to write into the agreement that every teacher that would be in those columns that shift left, they need a four and a quarter perk every year to make up for that.
To make up...
Shift left. So as long as they're here, they get what, they get what the salary matrix produces, plus a four and a quarter. So it wouldn't cost, it wouldn't cost anybody anything. It would just mean that teachers on the left-hand side of the matrix, moving to the right toward a master's, would not get a three-step advantage. For little effect, everybody to the left, if it's left in there. Yeah. So, Chad, did I explain that right?
You, the, I, and I've, I got part of it, I didn't need, we talked about this. The only other one was the BA thirty-six would step onto, you would just get rid of that column there, but you would allow the BA thirty-sixes to be at the MA BA thirty-six until we're done here too, 'cause there's three of us.
There are three current BA thirty-sixes.
And we would, we would just step to the MA since that's sliding over, and we would just step there and write that out till we're done.
You'd pick up that four and a half.
And, and that's what I think, if I understood it right, too, everybody just slides over four and a quarter for all those that are there, and then everybody else will miss that BA thirty-six, they'll have to go MA, or not MA, BA twenty-seven to the MA, which is, like I said...
Generally...
There's, there's only a couple of dumb people in the world that didn't get their masters when they were going at it. I had kids at that time that were growing up, and I just didn't do it, so...
It's never too late, Mr. Schumacher.
I got four years after.
So that's basically the main thing we're still talking about a little bit, I guess.
I have a question on this percentage of base for extra due. Did we ever talk about that?
It wasn't brought up by...
So it's staying the same?
It wasn't brought up by your side. Is that right? We didn't even talk about the extra due.
As far as the base table, I have one more question there.
Yeah, because, so they're, so this, they're arguing seven percent of seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Of the base?
Of the base. So...
Then I'll get a lot of percent of the full base, not that...
Okay, the full base, okay.
It's a, yeah, it's not where they are on the matrix, it's the upper left.
Some schools do do that, but they're usually the bigger schools. Smaller schools go off to whatever the base bay is.
So then the activities director, each season gets a whatever merger they would be on the thing?
Yeah, if they're...
Is that spring some, or is that springing?
Three seasons. So if they're a, if they're a teacher, and they're part of the collective bargaining, but if you're a, a school district whose A, B position is held by an administrator, then that is bargained independently between the administrator and the board.
And none of these other things below there changed?
No, other than we're adding the class sponsor down there as a number nine. We took it out of the, the matrix up there, and we specifically agreed to two fifty per sponsor.
So that's not based off the base at all, it's just a...
Right.
I'm sorry, Trent?
I was just gonna ask, so, you're gonna get rid of BA thirty-six, but you don't give the BA plus thirty-six on...
Well, I'm not getting rid of it. Yes.
So this one stays and this one goes?
Well, if we do this, it's not a BA thirty-six.
I mean, that's just what we're talking about.
Yeah. And when, when, we have three teachers yet, Trent, that were grandfathered into the BA thirty-six MA column, when those three teachers retire, we can get rid of the BA plus thirty-six that's tied in with the MA. So ideally, a clean matrix goes BA twenty-seven, MA, MA nine, MA eighteen, MA twenty-seven. So, the, the BA thirty-six column, maybe it should go there. The BA thirty-six slash MA column will turn into an MA-only column when, when we have three current teachers retired, that they were grandfathered in, negotiated in.
Just like we would grandfather in these teachers, with four and a quarter. Once all those teachers are gone, then that will come back out.
Well, that's a bull, Trent.
So basically, once you get to twenty-seven, if we do this, once you get twenty-seven, if you only get a master's, you just, you can just coast.
Correct.
So there's no, there's no incentive to get to the thirty-six anymore, you know?
There, but your thirty-six equates to a master's. So, it behooves you, when you start your BA plus program, that you take hours that will earn you a master's degree.
And don't we limit that a little bit more now than we used to anyway, that if they wanna get more schooling, it has to be approved to go towards what they're teaching, where before they could just go for whatever they wanted?
It's possible for you to go to some online institutions and grab three hours here, three easy hours here, three ease hours here, grab three easy hours here, three hours here, three hours here, move over. None of them though, they, they don't, they don't add up to anything. So, school districts generally want their teachers to get an advanced degree, which is gonna give them a certain degree of specialty than if I get three and three and three. Now, that can be beneficial, you know, just picking, I, I wanna pick up three hours of Google Classroom and get credit for it, which, which you can do. Sometimes you can take it for credit, not take it for credit. I mean, you just have a lot of options out there. But school districts generally want their teachers to earn a master's degree, which means we're gonna pay you more money in the long run too.
There used to be a lot of administration, they'd go in, get administration degrees just basically for the pay, not that they wanted to go into administration, but it made them a bump up in pay, where now we all allow them to do that.
You have more options now than you did, like take a generation, go in your master's program. It used to be C and I in administration for the most part. You have a lot more options now.
So how do we do that if a teacher does want to get their administration? We aren't really recognizing?
We have, we, we have granted credit for administrative degrees. We have, we have several on staff.
It has to be within, though, a college that's accredited, number one, correct?
Yeah.
And it must be from a program of that. That's the one we, used to be, you could, online, and we all, I get a thousand emails a day of, you know, do this college and get your administration degree. Now, what we're, what we're, I shouldn't say we are, that's in the negotiations, that it will be from an accredited university through the course with the course like that.
There's obviously been an explosion in online universities in the past decade or so, not all of which are accredited, but they should, can sure produce a transcript that any HR officer, school district would say, well, okay, good job, we're moving you over.
All right, if there's any more questions, we'll move on. Action items discussed, if possible, action on accepting the 2018-19 audit and AF.
Okay, well, since our auditor from last year's currently in Cedar County Jail, we...
Finally got caught.
Maybe not Cedar County, I don't know. But at any rate, I, you know, it's public, so... So we had to get a new auditor for this year, which is probably okay. Kelly Pendergast has been working with these folks for months, since we signed the contract, we visited about this in the spring. Dana Cole, most common used auditor by school district. I think they called Kelly the next day and said, we'd like this information, and this and this, and they were, and it didn't stop. And, you know, Kelly never complained, she's like, boy, they're gonna be thorough, that's good, this is good, we want it to be good and thorough. And there were things that they were asking for that I thought, why do you need this? What, what does this have to do with the financial audit? But still, we were happy to share. I did ask a couple questions, get a little pushback on a couple things. But they came and spent one full day, three or four ladies?
Uh, four.
Four gals came and spent one full day, but they had probably ten times the hours outside of that day in their office. So, it, it was, it was good, it was thorough, it produced a different, a document that looks different than what we've had in the past, which you have in your packet, it's an AF, it's not the audit, it's, it's an AF, which is produced from the audit. So as soon as they present us with our six, eight, ten, twelve copies of the audit, I'll give you a copy, and it will be, it'll be the same numbers that you have in your AF there, it'll just be a nice spiral-bound document, probably. So, it was a process, next year will be much easier. The state also had some different requirements for how to produce your audit, how to upload your audit, so the, the accounting software, which the board invested in for Kelly, it used to be a little easier, the audit was uploaded through the portal of the department bed, it was easy to do, left quite a bit more complicated for it to go through Kelly's accounting software. So, new auditor, new audit procedures, quite a learning experience. Kelly, do you wanna comment on any of that?
Yeah, they, you know, we're a small school district, so we don't have a big staff when it comes to the finance office, so we got a couple of normal dings that any small district would probably have that we don't have. One of the suggestions I think they had was, when it comes to bills, I get, I receive the invoices, I write the checks, I also do the bank statements and so forth. Dr. Arnold and Mr. Sauer, they sign off on every one of my invoices and take a look at everything. They noted our credit card procedures, that if there's not a receipt, they generally don't want us to pay it, and they wanna make the district employee... These are all suggestions. Another one was our custodial... These are all suggestions. Another one was our custodial fund that you guys give two hundred and seventy-five dollars to each one of our certified staff. They think that should go through payroll. I'm currently talking with Doug Harder.
Oh, good.
About how we should handle that, because those are our general funds, but they want us to take those, that two hundred and seventy-five through payroll. That might be a discussion for.
Who gets two seventy-five?
You guys pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars for flex benefits for all of our teachers. They would like to see that go through payroll. So there were a few things, recommendations that they had for us.
Is that a tax reason for us to?
Yeah, because, well, because it's, it's district funds, because that comes from the general, and the rest of the money comes from the employees themselves, and that should not be taxed. But the other schools handle that through going through Mr. Harder, they have him administer everything, but right now I administer everything, so we were able to do it here at the school. But like Dr. Arnold said, everything had to come from my software, and I only had two accounts out of seven on my software system. So I had to put the other five onto my system this summer and had to run through all the invoices back from September of last year. The system itself had, in some funds, had expenses from nineteen ninety-one, but revenues only started in two thousand and twelve. So the auditor and our auditors and I had to run through a lot of different reports to try to get everything to where we tied with what the numbers in the A F R from the state had in last year. So I, I knew it was going to be a thorough process, it's exactly what we want. We want somebody to keep us accountable for all of our accounts so that there's no abasement of any kind, we can want work done really good about it, so it was well worth the hard work, and I think next year will be somewhat easier, so.
So why don't, are you going to implement that if they don't have a receipt, you don't get reimbursed?
That has to come from you guys, that's, that's policy.
I think that's something we need to talk about. They're all, they're all adults, they're all responsible, they should be able to get a receipt. They'll learn quick enough.
Put that on agenda for the action items.
Is that a, Kelly, what kind, how big a problem is that?
You know what, there were a couple, but not, I think since we've, gosh, I haven't seen anything lately come through that we haven't had an invoice. Who's the only one? But that's because we got, that's a recurring invoice. But, you know, the biggest thing is just making sure we get itemized ones and, and, you know, for the most part, we get those. But yeah, we, I haven't seen any lately that haven't, we haven't had.
Well, I mean, that, you know, those have to be approved by me, so I mean, I can just deny those. I mean, if you have, without a receipt, pending a receipt, well, we'll always reimburse pending a receipt. And then somebody can always track that down. If they knew they weren't going to get their four dollars and thirty-seven cents back for a, you know, meal at Burger King, is there, or something? They'd be able to track that down and forget about it or not, but.
Or is it Burger King, yeah, you can eat for four dollars?
Possible burger. So.
Yeah, we're going to put that as a decision. Okay, thanks for all your work and time.
So do you, yeah, do you need a formal acceptance of the, of the audit?
We want Sherri to make sure, let Sherri make sure all the numbers are right. You guys make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve an accept.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty public school audit.
First and second at what?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, reports, activity directors report.
So I think Mr. Reed just shared with you the, you know, activities for the winter season. You know, as I shared with you also on Thursday, you know, Mr. Reed had a, speaking of Burger King, we ate at Burger King on the way to his game. And he thought it was some bad onions making him feel funny on Thursday. Nurse Beth took his blood pressure, said, it's elevated, why don't we, yeah, she, and she, she's expected to do precaution rules today. Why don't we, ah, we better go get your check done. Nah, I'm not going to go. She called Mr. Schmidt. And said, Mr. Reed, let's go. Nurse Beth says, you gotta go. Well, and then he didn't really want to go see our clinic. He thought, if you're going to make me go, maybe I should go to Pierce, that's where my doctor is. Maybe I'm not going to go. By that time I was down there and he was trying to fumble, find some lessy plan or something. But Mr. Schmidt said, be near Keith, I'm driving you. I followed Mr. Schmidt on the way to Pierce. And that time Nurse Beth had called Pierce and said, we're bringing Mr. Reed in, he feels a little funny. You know, when he said, God, Bill is going to tighten us here or something. I don't know what language you use, but like, oh, that's pretty serious, I don't mess with that. So they said, send him to Norfolk. So we met his wife in Norfolk, we called her, she met us. So they, they put him through a stress test and said, you're stressed out. We're going to keep you overnight and check you out tomorrow. They did. He was, they gave me some drugs, some nitroglycerin.
Stixxay.
B P meds. But so we, we had that, you know, little thing with Mr. Reed. We'll try to not stress him out so much, I guess. He, he's certainly. Well, I mean, yeah, we always got to take care of all our people, that, that was, you know, something that just, you know, something like that happens, we go. So, so he's back and he's fine, feeling good. So you have his report of activities. This looks to be a routine winter season for us. One act, first public performance, I believe, was last night and.
Sandy State football.
Basketball's going on? No, that's still fall season. But yes, at any rate. Mr. Reed does certainly does a fantastic job.
Did your report do all right?
No. He would have spoken.
Okay, Nurse Holzer for it.
Heather and I both went to the region three meeting in Norfolk, that was at Northeast Community College. Karen was there from K B Law. She talked about technology and litigation that goes along with cell phones and computers and all that stuff. So it was good for us just to get a refresher on some of that and the things that you can see in school. It's nice to communicate with people about. They also talked about M T S S implementation, multi-tier support systems. So we've started talking about some scheduling stuff in ways we can create new interventions within our schedule and getting kids a little extra help if we can at certain times. We've started to put that together. That kind of goes with the C I P meeting we went to, a continuous improvement plan. Started looking at school improvement, started creating committees, different groups, teachers, putting them on there. We're trying to create more leadership through the school. That way it's not just looked at as us being in control of everything. We want our teachers and staff to feel empowered, so we're trying to create some of that through the committees that we've created. And then Ms. Thompson started putting together an action plan, everything that we've done in school improvement wise since before we were here, all the way up to date it to what we've done so far. And I think we have through March planned out already, April, something like that. So she's done a good job putting all that stuff together for us so far.
Okay, and then the state came in and did their assessment on our preschool program. And Shirley and Crystal were phenomenal with it. I do have to share results, and so this is one of the areas that I said I, or one of the places I said I would share our results. So some of the results for emotional support, they scored a four point five, which is just great. Some of the things that were said were teachers and children are observed laughing and smiling and having fun with one another. All teachers are consistently making eye contact with children and all teachers maintain a warm and calm voice throughout all cycles. There were several other positive comments, but those were just ones that I picked out. For classroom organization, they scored a four point three three. And some of the things that were said were the rules are consistent for all children throughout all cycles. Majority of children are aware of the classroom expectations and frequently comply with them. And then for instructional support, that area was a one point nine two. And a few why or how questions were heard, and it is where the children are asked open-ended questions. So that area was a little bit lower for us. But she said, when, in talking with the lady from the state, she did say that that is an area that is typically lower. So not to be concerned with the scores. So Shirley and I then had a Zoom conference where we talked over the computer with some evaluators from the state. And they gave us a couple of different things that we need to work on and some that highlighted some different areas that we were doing really well. And so I have already sent a transition plan. So the plan for preschoolers when they come in and all the way through to when they're transitioning to kindergarten. I've already sent the dissemination plan and I've already sent the checklist for rule eleven. She just wanted pages one through eight. So those have all already been sent off. And then there are a couple of additional items that Kim Texel, that's the person that we are working with. And that we will continue to work, Shirley and I will continue to work hand in hand with her throughout the remainder of the year just to get the program in, in certain areas. One of them, just the snack that we offer, to make sure that we're up to, up to par with that. We thought that just offering milk was enough, but we have to offer a snack. So just little things like that will make sure that we are good to go in all areas that.
Is this something you were, is this down there, you're in your house?
Well, Shirley wasn't using gold in the past, and so she, she, this is her first year back with gold. And so I think snack in the past was different, and so, yeah. But this is her, this is our first year back with gold and everything that Kim Texel told us was, was pretty positive. Four point five, the, the highest score is a five. So she wanted to make sure that we understood, you know, this isn't an evaluation and not to look at it as that. And it wasn't a rating for Shirley, which, I mean, as a teacher, it's hard not to look at it as that. And so she was very nervous coming in and you can't talk to the evaluators at any point in time, so that was also hard. But she just did a rock star job and, yeah, it was just great. So she did a nice job with that. Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Halloween, classroom parties were great, watching all of the kiddos go in and out for their parade. I know, big words. Was a lot of fun. And then trick or treat was a great success. And then we did have our first round of stat meetings in October. They were very successful. And we will have our second round of stat meetings on November twenty-first. You want to talk about preschool night? You were there?
Sure, I was there. Carved some great pumpkins, it was a good time ahead by all. Threw a heck of a party, good snacks. The, the ghost poop really got me. She had cotton balls, that was a good one. But the kids had fun and it was, I mean, it was fun just to hang out with different community members too, as adults helping kids. So that was a fun night and they did a great job with it. Our music department, they had a choir festival in Wausau on Tuesday night. Ms. Knox took the pet band down to Elkhorn Valley and they competed in a battle of the pet band. Pretty cool thing from what I've heard and how they set it up, so they've been doing a really good job. Our seniors all gathered in here, I believe it was on the twenty-second of October. And they all applied to college. That was applied college day we had. So Mr. Peter brought all the seniors in here, had them apply to whatever the top college was on their list if they had not. If they had, pick another college to apply to. Some of them was just, they had started the application but never finished it. So it was just him sitting down with them, helping them finish, get all the paperwork that they need. Some of them not maybe understanding fully the questions and what they wanted. So it was just great to have the two of us walk around and helping out kids get applied to college, get that finished. We took pictures of them with the banners where they applied, put it out on Twitter, did fun stuff like that, so that was a fun morning. Then F F A attended National F F A Convention, Becca Komet played in the honor band, which was a great accomplishment for her and for our chapter. So it was exciting to see kids taking part in all that stuff. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you for that. Next report is president's report. I just want to say kudos to the program today, it was awesome in all aspects. Bam, music, little preschool kids doing the pledge, it was awesome. Third grade and under, that song we sang was, was pretty cool. I'm sure the weather kept a lot of people away. I didn't think it was attended very well by the general public, but it must have been a program. So kudos on that. That's one thing, congratulations Brooklyn Cub, she made state across country, did pretty well, I think, down there. I don't know what her expectations were, but I think she did all right. And then Mr. Peter, for us thanking him for taking over the program so we can continue to send people like that down to state. I give for that also. That's all I have right now, so. Move on to superintendent's report.
Kate, Mike and Tim and I will head to the state school board convention. We'll leave on the twentieth, come home the twenty-second, so that's next Wednesday. So I'll send you more details about that, whatever transportation arrangements we need to make.
Still combine.
That kind of business. Let Tom know, Kate can have a personal day out of work if you let him drive the combine, but we don't let him do that, so. We're, we replaced the backwards on the pirate jimp and talked about that for a couple of years, wanted to secure the funds for at least half of it, which we were able to do. So they're, they're regulation size, but they're, they're not the exact same standard of your, if you're backwards on the east and west, you'll notice when you look at them. So the ball backers and booster club, each picked up the expense of one of those. So certainly gives our, our kids a more authentic experience when they're using those hoops. If they're shooting free throws, they're shooting free throws at a hoop that looks like the one essentially that they'd shoot free throws on in a game. And also after forty-two years of steel fan backwards with tape on them to make the box, it's probably time to modernize just a little bit. So we were able to secure half the funds for that, so. So, so that's, those are a thousand dollars apiece and we got two of them paid for. Bus bar garage doors, I've got a, two bids, one from overhead door, one from Warren garage door. I assume they're apples to apples, but you never know what, what they're using, what specific mechanics and all that business. But Warren is five thousand and thirty dollars, overhead doors about thirty-five hundred dollars. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we go with the most expensive thing to put on that building down there. So probably we do need to replace them though, so.
Do they have openers?
I, I don't know how many have openers, I think.
No, I mean, in the estimates, there's, that's openers, was it? I mean, did, is that, is that a difference?
Electric operator, yes. Oh, no, 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 that's option to add an electric operator. So there's option to add an electric operator, which you need for each of those. So they do not currently have each of those, they don't have, so.
Does Warren's?
That's what I was wondering if that would be the difference.
Do our optional add eighty-five dollars for five struts. Optional add hundred and two for six struts, universal secret hoist. So. Cannot tell right off the bat if, does not include heel to the James Ray, Warren still doors, they're going to pump it. I don't see those. Continuous duty motor with manual reset overload protection. Is a continuous duty motor?
Yep, it's got a motor, it's got a.
Okay, right. So the Warren, it appears, has.
The opener way.
The opener rhythm. Overhead, option to add electric operator.
Warren, they put that option cost.
And they don't have the cost of that, so. They thought they could. So if you want the Warren, that's five thousand dollars, so that would need you to approve.
Doesn't say how much. The overhead door might be over five thousand too, by the time you add the openers.
Did very well.
Yeah.
Because.
Does it itemize what they charge for the openers and the board?
Nine hundred and forty-two.
We're talking one door, two.
Two.
What are they going to have to do? Oh, they're both foot high.
Those are their doors.
They're, that's a pretty good hoist to do that. Not to mention you have to do it on a ladder too to get it up to. too, to get it up to-
So you got a pretty good throw from the ground and get it all the way up.
Got three of them. Stick with it.
If you put a rope on one.
Is it eight hundred dollars per opener, or is that for the total?
One. One, rain or control hoist standard.
For two would be about eighteen hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Cool clothes?
So-
So they're pretty comparable.
Both are probably quality. I mean, these are reputable companies.
Do you want to make this an action item for next?
Well, it'd be nice to get it done.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't pass it.
Yeah, no.
You probably need Bob to come. Probably need Bob to come and tag you for one.
Yeah, essentially. Have you contacted him to see about fill for, so we can actually number.
Are the doors usable, right? They must be usable to get in and out of them, right?
Yeah. I suppose they get, you know, I mean, it's not like this hardcore litter is here for good now, and that-
I think the one doors open all the time, really. Is that, last time I was up there, there's a big heavy wooden door.
They come with an extra launch stick for those that need it.
Oh, yeah, all the Bob come.
Do they have the western ladders?
Yeah. They won't, I don't know how they're the best to fit, you know, I'm sure they're all shaped. But they can come out and do that. Custom fit, or do they just sell ten-foot doors, twelve-foot doors, or whatever?
Why are they not fit?
Well, I bet it's not size opening. I bet they don't make a door, just a general-sized door that would fit that opening. I bet it's ordered to fit that hole. Didn't, I, Bob said that when he was here, that when he asked about the doors, they were tall, they were extra tall or something for the buses. They're tall and narrow, if I remember right.
I don't know, but our director, Francis Baker, come and present to you. Either one will probably be over five grand, but it's two dollars plus.
Yep. I mean, if you wanted to make a call in West Oxford and see if they'll do it. We've got another month.
I can have, I can have, I'll bring it to his attention. I'll say, hey, if you follow up or you want to check out. But we want to approve this. You want to approve this next month, I suppose, to get that.
But you're gonna have to have Warner, or that's all you openers, though. In West Oxford, they don't sell openers, do they?
I know. I brought Garage George Farm and Ranger in Norfolk. They put it all in.
Even the electrical openers?
I got an app, I can open and go to them anywhere.
Even the electrical openers?
Twelve by fourteen, three of them.
Did they do it? They probably hired an electrician that works for it.
I have no idea about it. Installs.
Yeah, I'll, Bob, do a little more research on that, just, you know, at least, you know, we got two good reputable choices, I guess, to go with it.
But have them add the openers to that.
Yep, yep, yep. Can do. We mentioned the audit, of course. Oh, Train, Train sells service room. Of course, we have a service room from Rasmussen to take care of all our HVAC systems in this building to the tune of about four grand a year. Train, or not Rasmussen?
It's down to three thirty-four.
It's down some. We negotiated that down a little bit while they lost the elementary. So we've got new equipment over there. We do need a service room. We paid twelve thousand dollars this last year for service agreement through Train, which was part of the original contract. They sent us a bill for another twelve thousand dollars, and I said, wait, no. That's, I didn't think it was necessary, so I called them. I said, come on, what are our options here? Do we really need this? Do we really need you to come check out brand-new equipment twice a year? So I said, give us another choice to consider. So they took out training. There was all kinds of stuff that wasn't necessary in that for ser, in that service room for the second year. We don't need man, hourly training, this kind of business and all that on the system. So we have a twelve thousand dollar option and for, for, and they come twice a year, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and they come twice a year, or four thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars to come once a year.
That second trip's awful expensive.
Yeah. And they, but they took out some other unnecessary trainings that were in this very, very, very fine print, that most people just say, hey, we got two thou, you know, two million dollar project here. Actually, that, no, that wasn't two million dollars. Let's say we got one million dollars, we need to make sure we take care of it. And maybe that's what you want to do. If you buy a new car, you take it in, and you have two hundred dollars where the preventive maintenance done on every other month, because you want to, you know, catch anything. You want to not. So that's your business. But, but we've got a twelve thousand dollar, two-year service agreement, or no, they'll come twice. It's twelve thousand dollars for one year. They'll come twice, or four thousand dollars.
And that's not come because we called them to come. They'll just look everything over and make sure it's working right.
Yeah, they come to check them on.
So basically, annual inspection.
I'd pause it up. That's a lame answer.
So does that keep us on their top of the list when we have a problem? Because if you don't have a contract with them, they, you have problems, they might not come for a week. But with Rasmussen, that contract kind of gets them out here right away, right?
I don't know. I, I don't, I wouldn't know that for sure, whether we'd be priority for them. I, I doubt that. They either tell everybody your priority, or they tell nobody your priority. But, I mean, shoot, I think-
But school's a little more priority.
I think once a year is probably good enough, as opposed to paying almost, you know, three times the amount down to ten a year, so.
Because it doesn't give us a break on their service calls or anything like that.
No, it's just what you pay. See, we, we pay Rasmussen four hundred and some dollars a month just to cover them to come check the equipment.
Fancy.
If there is no motion to accept a twelve thousand five hundred dollar service agreement, you know, I'll, I'll sign the four thousand dollars and send it back tomorrow.
Just a one-year deal. I mean, if we start having a lot of trouble-
They'll give us that every year. They'll, they'll give us something every, you know, they'll, just like Rasmussen, they want to negotiate terms of their service agreement every year. So you gotta know you guys are familiar with those. So, and then the rest of the information is listed right there. Roll and summer meetings out of district, and that's, okay, that's it.
All right. We are not going to adjourn, but if you guys want to go, you're free to go. We're gonna talk about the- Evaluation form.
That's the-
And we will go into closed session at the end of that, too.
In the morning. Just like you were saying.
Are you gonna make a motion to go to closed session?
We need to do that with you here?
Yes.
Yes.
So should we go to closed session first, and then come back and do our-
Well, then, if, if you don't need me here, then if somebody just wants to take notes as to who made the motion to come out and what time you guys finished the meeting, that's great.
Kyle's data.
I'm sorry.
Take that. Kyle's data.
Oh, thank you.
Don't worry, guys. I got it.
He doesn't have anything to do with it. It's a slow night.
Are you still shivering after practice?
I gotta go wash my thirty-seven layers of clothes for lunch. Get ready.
Good luck tomorrow.
Yeah, thanks.
So the guy that you have up in the air stands pretty good blowing in our ear, so anybody breaks loose, we've got him pinned down.
Keaton's the guy. They score a long touchdown, so it's a ball.
That's probably not right. And this is reported.
Talking about his coaching duties.
Oh, I'll make a motion going to closed session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations with PPEA.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So first and second, that we go into closed session, discuss collective bargaining negotiations with PPEA. Krista?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Him?
Yes.
Mine?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
You guys are gonna take your camera and do a closed session. Nobody else can be in here, so.